So as you know, this was presented last meeting and we did not have a fully completed draft plat that showed the proper utility easements and things like that. So we've asked the applicant to work on that and he has done so, but we don't quite have the final drawing approved yet. So we are asking for another, or recommending another continuance. But Ben is here if anybody has questions still.
Anything?
No, it's just the process of working with surveyors.
Maybe come on up to the mic and give us a little brief update.
Yeah, we've been working in our midst. The surveyor has other obligations, but we've gotten to the point where we have a primary myersubdivision plat that should be pretty much inclusive. There's a couple of tweaks we may have to make. And then immediately after the filing of the myersubdivision easement will be the final of the myersubdivision plat will be the myersubdivision easement, which requires a full picture and some property descriptions that are myersubdivision. So we're finishing those out so they can all be viewed at the same time approved, but we should be fine by the next meeting.
Okay. Guess that was my own question. Thank you. Anybody here? Anybody in line to speak to this? Probably not.
No, well. No, we're good.
Okay.
Well then, Mr. Chairman, if it's appropriate, I move to continue this public hearing until our next regular meeting on March, I believe it's the 24th.
Correct.
Second. We have a motion and a second to continue this to the next meeting. We'll vote.
Okay, Foley?
Yes.
Boomer?
Yes.
Kergel?
Yes.
Colby? I'm sorry, Dermingson?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Layton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right.
So we've got some updates for you. Thank you, Ben.
Thanks, Ben.
We'll see you next time. Just a few updates that go over and then one sort of informal conversation that we'd like to have specifically related to the land use code. Just first of all, we, as you see, this is the team at the moment, we are in the process of hiring a planning technician. We actually did some interviews last week and we are planning on making an offer very soon. So we hope to have somebody on board. Might take a little while with that transition and all, but as soon as we can get somebody in the office and start getting them trained, the better. Definitely need the help. Carolyn, you want to give everybody an update on the SEPA grant?
Sure. So we did submit a grant application to the GOV grants, which is the state of Colorado's program specifically under the State Internet Portal Authority, or SEPA, SIPA. This was for permitting software with some GIS enhancements so that we can have online permitting and take payments online. It would allow pretty much basically anyone to come to the site, set up an account, keep track of anything they do with community development would be sort of the first aspect of it. And then those, that type of information, depending on the vendor we get, could be integrated into an ESRI platform and be in GIS in real time. That we would then, the plan is to then have a public interface of GIS, like the county has Q Public with that platform, but it would be our own platform and specific to city information. So zoning, land use, subdivision information, overlay districts, historic, you know. And we can, over time, load information so that when anyone go in and click on a parcel, for example, and pull down like a dropdown, it would say, you know, you're in a historic district, you're part of this subdivision, blah, 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 you know. So the attributes of that parcel, once they're in the database. But the reason we need the grant is to create that whole online permitting system and to expand the capacity of our GIS to do that. So it might mean if we get the grant, hiring someone to, like a consultant, to expand our GIS capacity a little bit for the time that we needed. And the applications were due last Friday. The state expects to award or notify awards by the first of May or so. Take a while. And then execute by June. I think it was April, might be April. Anyway, it takes a while. And then if we were awarded, actually three most preferential vendors that we did get quotes from. So we have been doing research on all this. We didn't just, you know, come up with this out of the blue. We've done, looked at demos of a lot of different platforms and things. So the preferable vendors already have what's called a state cooperative purchasing something or other, where you might not necessarily even have to do an RFP if you select one of those through a grant. But then, of course, it would be the city's policy too we would have to follow. So anyway, so if we're going to order the grant, we may or may not have to do an RFP with our. And then the budget that we did apply for was just under a hundred thousand. The annual fee to maintain the software of the permitting can run anywhere from fifteen to thirty thousand dollars a year. So that would be something council would have to obviously assess as to whether that can be put into the budget on an ongoing basis. And then it is, all of these online permitting systems are capable of expanding. So if you go to some of the bigger cities, you just get a permitting webpage and it's, I want to do this, I want to do this permit, I want to apply for license, I want to reserve an event space, you know. You can literally put all the city's functions into an online system like that where people could potentially conduct, you know, most of their city business online through those platforms and it would just be more integrated and have the ability to issue reports, you know, summarizing the activities that people have done and things like that. So it's basically a big database management system.
We're still kind of stuck in the same place we were 20 years ago when it comes to accepting permits and land use applications and everything else. It's very manual, very analog and be nice to get with the times and have something where you can push a button and generate all that information that you need. Unfortunately, it's been cut out of the budget now twice in a row. So we decided to sick Carolyn on.
Sick the grant writer.
Good.
That's what I said in my interview, I can write grants. So fingers crossed and again, you know, we'd still take paper applications or whatever, any assistance anyone needs or any form that they need to utilize. But if it's all online, it would reduce all the emails going back and forth that we have to do with our agencies and reviewers and utility companies. Everybody could enter into the platform that has permission and put their comments in there. So it's helps, it helps both us and obviously the public to be more efficient and cost less hopefully in the long run.
All about trying to create some efficiencies. Though if it's as efficient as going to Zoom, I don't know.
Kristin, you want to give a quick update on all things ADU?
Yeah, so you guys might remember last meeting, I gave like a little presentation on accessory dwelling units and the House bill that was passed specifically regarding the DOLA grant program that is in the works. I think one of the questions that was raised is how much money might this grant provide and what might the money go to? So we did a little bit more digging into the grant, both in the specifics of the House bill and also what DOLA, kind of how they are interpreting this portion. So the state treasurer shall transfer five million dollars from the general fund to the grant fund. And DOLA summarizes this to mean that the, that five million will go to implementation of the grant program. So we're thinking the municipalities can apply for that money to update codes, work on incentive programs, anything like that. And then another section in the House bill reads, the state treasurer shall transfer eight million dollars from the general fund to the Colorado Economic Development Fund. DOLA interprets this to mean that this will go to the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority to establish, to establish the following programs to benefit low to moderate income residents. So staff's take on that is that this money will probably go to eligible candidates inside eligible municipalities to permit and build these ADUs. We have also heard from DOLA staff members that it's anticipated that applicants can apply for fifteen to twenty-five thousand dollars of grant money per ADU. So they haven't released too much more information about how their grant will be run quite yet, but we did think we would kind of give you guys an update on that. So is there any other questions about it at this time?
Can you remind us kind of what the parameters of that were?
Yeah, so.
The actual, because it was height and.
Heightened parking.
Heightened.
Yep, the big.
Setbacks and parking primarily.
And the parking had some caveats, like if there's space on site, if there's no immediate street parking. There are some still allowances where we could require the parking on site, if you might remember. But it's more so the setbacks that we were concerned about. If you guys know, remember kind of that diagram that we built into the code with essentially bulk, bulk plane management? There's, there's some quantities in there that might not work. So it's the 10-foot setback if you are going above the 20 to 22 feet tall. That would be more restrictive than a five-foot setback for a primary structure. And the grant, or the House bill reads that you can't have the ADU have more dimensional, stricter dimensional standards than the primary structure. And again, as an overview, this is something we would opt into. We do not, we're not required to be a part of this program, but if we do want these funds to apply to our city, then we would need to change these, these parts of our code in order to qualify.
For presumably fifteen to twenty-five thousand dollars per ADU.
Per ADU. And any, any grant money that the city would want to go for.
Up to an unknown amount.
Correct.
There's a pretty limited budget for it through the state and I don't anticipate that's going to expand real soon, given the state's budgetary constraints right now. But they, I, we have been told that, you know, they hope to spread this around geographically so it's not just within the, the front range. But at some point here, the city's going to need to make a decision whether or not we're going to sign on to it, but it does come with some sacrifices to the existing regulations.
Our code would need to be compliant by June 30. So we would kind of need to know enough in advance in that to update our codes appropriately.
There's no second bite at the apple, right? If you miss that deadline, you can't see how it goes for some municipalities in the first year.
I think, I think DOLA would probably be lenient on it if we said, you know, we've had at least one council meeting to change the code, to work through this, but we're not there yet. There is a second, a second date of September 28th where they would actually certify or grant extensions and stuff like that. So I'm thinking that it's possible if we're like in the works. I mean, we would need to be serious about it, but yeah. I think we'll, we'll give you guys an update when we feel like we need to have an answer by. Do you agree with that?
Yeah, and it seems like DOLA still needs to get us a little bit more information. I think they're still formulating a lot of this stuff. They've got conversations around it going on right now. So hopefully in the next month or two, we'll have a little bit more.
And I think one of the other things that I mentioned originally in last meeting too is that the reason that we're bringing this to your attention is that we're already meeting most of the criteria. It would only really take a couple of tweaks for us to, to be an eligible city. Cool.
All right. Next thing I wanted to bring up, we've talked about this on and off over the years. The Regional Planning Commission, for those of you who may not be familiar, there is technically through an IGA with a county, a regional planning commission that deals specifically with developments proposed within the municipal planning area, which is sort of that transitional zone between city limits and the municipal services area and the rest of the county. And the most recent members to that commission from the city of Salida were included Greg and Giff. It's been a few years for sure. We haven't had a meeting since, I mean, it's at least 2020, if not before that. And then another person who's no longer on the board. So it's represented by three people from the city's planning commission, three from the counties, and then staff from each jurisdiction. And I've been in conversations with the county about it. It's likely that we're going to start seeing some development. They've gotten some inquiries to the county at least about some potential projects out in the municipal services area, or sorry, municipal planning area. And so we do need to formalize it. It won't be at this meeting, but I wanted to see of folks' interest from this board so that I can bring that to the county and we can, we can get that all formalized. But who would be interested in being on that to be a part of separate meetings outside of this regular schedule for those projects out in the county on an occasional basis? It could be, you know, as frequent as monthly, but more likely it's going to be once or twice a year in all likelihood. And we could, I'll collect some interest now if we can and then we can bring it. I see a hand from Dan. We can bring it to the next meeting to see, to have you all, because it's actually the planning commission that appoints those three individuals. Anybody else interested in doing it?
Chicken.
I'd like to see some of our newer members do it. I know I was on that way back in the day before Greg and, and we had like one or two meetings and it is kind of fascinating, but it would, I would love to see some of our newer people step up to that. That would be kind of fun.
I'd have to double check if, if alternates can be on that. I'll have to look into the IGA language. I don't see why not, but I'll have to take a closer look. But anybody else?
I'll think about it.
Ken, you'll think about it. All right.
Good, good.
Good, at least thinking is happening.
Sarah, would you be interested?
I'll also think about it.
I would be interested in not being on it.
Giff has done his share with the land use code.
Yeah, actually both Giff and Greg have been very involved with the land use code advisory committee, so. All right, well, think about it and keep thinking about it and then we can bring it back to one of the next meetings for sure. So that'd be great. And then the last thing, so not, not quite a work session, more of a conversation around this. If we need to make it into a real work session, we can. But we wanted to expand a conversation that we were having at the land use code advisory committee level recently around R4 properties. And so can you pull up the zoning map? Yeah, that'd be awesome. So this has been sort of a murky area for a while because R4 has been used and abused in various ways over the years. And the intent, as stated in the code for the R4 zone district has been for manufactured housing. However, that zone district has been applied to brand new subdivisions and other locations. And the interpretations at the director level have varied admittedly as to what type of housing units are allowed in the R4 zones. And there are some developments that are entirely R4 and have allowed either entirely single-family stick-built units or a mix, and in some cases, only manufactured housing. Because of some of the uncertainty and the fact that we were rewriting the code, I went back to the intent of the code itself with some of the interpretations when people have come in and asked to do a stick-built home in certain locations that have been zoned R4. And I have instructed my staff to not allow stick-built homes to be built in those locations unless it was a kind of a brand new subdivision where the intent was for a stick-built community. So we wanted to expand this conversation and get a little bit more feedback from you all as to how you feel if R4 zoning was expanded as far as the types of housing units, perhaps based off of the nature of the individual lots. And so to jump into that, you know, take for instance down way in the southeast corner there, we have a big lot, the RV resort, which is zoned R4. And today, we would not allow any stick-built homes to be put onto that property. Its main uses are for RVs. Before that, it had been zoned actually for tiny homes, eventually turned into an RV resort. We do have a few other RV resorts within city limits, including, boy, I always forget the one that's off of J Street there, but pretty close to Longfellow, between Longfellow and where the New Montessori School is going in. That's an RV, sorry, that's a mobile home park, right? However, and those entire areas are zoned as single lots, R4, and have these parks. But if you look around and I'm going to.
Could you zoom in just a little bit for Carolyn? Because I'm going to point out all the locations. We have places like Rex Circle over here, which is zoned R4 and the vast majority of those are stick-built homes. You have properties here along Chupita Trail, stick-built. You've got everything out here near the river, which there's primarily mobile homes out in that area. And then you've got a mix in this area, which are all individually owned, mix of mobile homes, stick-built, and then you've got River Ridge, which was, it was split zone to begin with. They didn't end up rezoning it. That's why that didn't.
Yeah.
So anyways, just, just to kind of summarize, there's a variety of different housing types within R4 depending on the specific area in town. And it's been brought up that perhaps, you know, the intent is to try to really preserve the naturally occurring form of affordable housing, mobile homes, that we have throughout town, which a lot of communities do that for mobile home parks and RV resorts or whatever it may be. But there are a lot of lots throughout town that are individually owned, that are zoned R4. And there are, I think, there's a realistic question that's come up around the fact that some of these mobile homes are going into disrepair. And it may even be beyond the means of those homeowners to remove, you know, move that mobile home off the property and move a new one onto the property. But those folks who own it may not have another option, right? And so again, the questions come up, are we limiting those individuals from being able to profit potentially from those individual lots, say to sell that lot to somebody who might be interested in building a stick-built home so that that person can then move into maybe another form of housing, maybe to live out the rest of their lives? But it's, it's an interesting question that has come up. I don't think that we want to do anything with the, you know, the mobile home parks. We want to continue to protect those. The question is really around these more individual lots that provide an economic opportunity for the owners and potentially could improve the quality of the housing stock that we have in those areas. So at that, I'm just going to stop. I'm going to open it up to you all to see, you know, what thoughts everybody here has because we want to be able to write the code correctly for, for this zone district as we move forward. Anybody?
Can you just maybe explain what that means in practice? Like you'd take those lots and you'd change them to R3, you'd change them to R2, could allow that?
That is an option. We certainly could rezone them. In the, the future land use map does show, I'm pretty sure, at least the majority, if not all, of the areas that are currently zoned R4, they retain that R4 designation. That is just a guiding document. It does not mean that we absolutely have to. If there was a good policy reason to convert it, yes. Some of these areas could be rezoned as R3 as a, as a possibility. Or another way of doing it would be to retain it as R4 because R4 is the only one that allows for manufactured housing currently. We could retain it, but then we could also put some rules around it to say, for instance, that mobile homes can be replaced with stick-built homes for lots under a certain size or lots that are, do not function as a mobile home park.
Which would just redefine R4.
Yes, yeah. Because currently that code definition does not include stick-built units.
And so you're specifically talking about lots in R4 that are owned.
Individually owned.
Individually owned. Not any rented, which is what typically the, a mobile home park, they would rent their space.
They don't own the land.
So if you opened it, yeah, right. If you opened it up to, if you changed the, I mean, don't, I wouldn't want to change the zone, I don't think, but you know, loosened up maybe some of the requirements to allow tiny homes, for example, or stick-built homes? I mean, we've had that conversation before too. We haven't had, we don't really have anything that allows a tiny home, right?
We do. The, the requirements are more around building code when it comes to tiny homes. Tiny homes as statutorily defined are stick-built. They actually have to meet IRC.
IRC.
IRC, thank you. Which means they need to be put on a foundation.
I mean, I don't, I think that sounds pretty reasonable to me as long as you're not forcing people out. In the back of my mind, like a long time ago when we started talking about the code, and I might not, I might have made this up, okay, I might be dreaming it, but I'm kind of remembering something that said that if you took over a property that was deemed affordable, that you, you had to maintain the affordability in the new development? Did I make that up?
I don't remember.
I mean, it would have been way back in the very beginning.
I had a similar question along those lines.
I can't remember that.
If someone did remove a mobile home in this case, they still have to pay an inclusion housing fee, right? Or is that only if they pull a permit or anything or no?
It depends on the type of land use application action. So if somebody, for instance, owned an individual lot and they had a mobile home on it and they. And they sell it to somebody else. And that person just simply wants to remove the mobile home and build a stick built home, there's nothing there that triggers the inclusionary housing.
Could we change that? Or is that not really feasible?
We, I mean, it's always a possibility to change that as part of inclusionary housing that.
I I think that's kind of essentially what what we're really trying to do is keep it affordable. And I think imposing an inclusionary housing fee on something like that. Cause there's really, I think there's a great opportunity to turn some of that into. Whether whether it's market rate affordable housing or deed restricted affordable housing and well built housing. So I would, I would be cautious about changing or restricting basically.
Are you saying because of the size of the, like, how do you make sure?
I mean, the the lot, I think the size of the lot and the parameters of what you can build in there.
Cause R four is pretty dense, I mean, that's the most dense.
I don't think anybody's gonna tear down or.
Right.
And then I would say. Maybe, maybe you can't join lots. You know, if you you can't buy four lots and then. Do a lot line elimination on all of them and build yourself a nice big.
Right, that'd be the worry, you would rather.
I mean, you wouldn't be able to do that anyway, you know.
But maybe you could do that and form a RV park. Or a mobile home park, I mean, you know, but I do agree with you, Greg, that, you know, I wouldn't want to see somebody taking undue advantage. That's my worry is that these are, like Bill said, naturally occurring more affordable houses in whatever state they're in. And I and I really want to want to remember that, there was something in there that said you couldn't just remove a bunch of affordable properties. Naturally occurring affordable properties and create something that wasn't at least as affordable.
Is that, are you thinking maybe is some of the state rules that have gone in?
I can't remember where it came in, but it's just like in my head somewhere, I don't know, it's a scary place to be.
The other thing I think we have to be careful of is that, okay, if something gets annexed or. Some currently vacant land and somebody says, oh, I'm gonna zone it R four. And then they start putting stick built stuff, new stick built stuff on vacant land, I don't think we want that. I think if we do what you're suggesting, it should only be on as a replacement to an existing.
What's, what?
Manufactured dwelling.
What, there's not, the difference between R three and R four and the is not great, right?
No, it's it's pretty minor, actually.
So I think you just go R three.
Like what what would incentivize somebody to want?
R four and stick build on it, I don't think you would.
But but what happens, I mean, are you talking about the. An existing structure or the scenario that I'm talking about?
Right, like if you're a new, a new subdivision and you say, I want to do R four and do stick built, but I think. Really, the difference, the difference in R four and R three is that R four is for manufactured homes. Like lot sizes and coverages and all that.
There wouldn't be any advantage for somebody trying to build on a vacant lot.
And if it was annexed, we'd have the option to to make a recommendation to zone in R three anyway. But I but I'm hearing what Give is saying, cause there are places, I think River Ridge is one of them, where things are zoned. And then all of a sudden, big single family homes are going up, so, you know, I do like what we're talking about for something that's a replacement. More than something that's new. I mean, for the reason you said, you know, it's like if somebody's gonna do R four, what's the motivation, you know? Unless they're wanting to do a manufactured home.
Again, if they're individual lots and suppose they are. Like a River Ridge where it's not one builder building everything. It, you know, they're sold as individual lots and somebody buys two lots and. Puts a stick built, you know, depending on the size of the lots, that still might meet the new. Minimum coverage requirement and.
So are you saying that they shouldn't be able to join the lots? Eliminate the lot lines, that that lot line should remain.
Can we? Oh, go ahead or.
Is there information available? I don't even know what these lots look like, are they in fact real small and like?
They're fairly small, you can see like how tight they are down in. Long Vine, Walnut and Caldwell there. A lot of those are, you know, three thousand square foot, three thousand to five thousand square foot lots.
They're pretty small.
I, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I, well, real, my comment, just to follow up this conversation. I I agree with, I think, the intent of what you're saying, I think the way to limit that or to manage that would be through, is it minimum densities? Similar to the conversation we had previously about R two in the future land use code. Where if you just had minimum required density.
Which we do in the new code.
Yeah, then you, then then you don't have to.
Then it's not an issue.
It's a lot simpler.
Well, if 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 they're real small lots, like three thousand square foot lots, you might still be able to meet. And if it's minimum density, you could put up a McMansion, you know, and meet your minimum density.
I mean, you could look at tightening that up too. In R four specifically and saying like, maybe you're okay joining, cause there are some where, there's tiny lots, so it's like, maybe you join two, but. You can't join three or. I mean, I think there are also small lots which are gonna provo, like those, I I don't see those homes. I I see them also being like a graduation of affordability, I don't see them being.
And we want to encourage smaller homes, that's the whole point, we want to encourage, you know, smaller, less square footage.
Well, I think that's sort of like the policy consideration that Bill is asking us to weigh, which is sort of. He's bringing up what what I think is an unintended consequence of the R four restriction, which is. The the intent was to keep property, keep naturally occurring affordable housing by requiring certain lots to remain as manufactured housing. But what he's saying is that with individual lots, that's also restricting the ability of families who own individual lots to build intergenerational wealth. So there's sort of a conflicting policy interest between the ability of families to sell their lot, they're not incentivized to maintain the lot because. There's no equity if you can only sell it to another person that can put a manufactured home on it. It's the same problem with deed restricted housing, there's no incentive to maintain your housing if your equity is capped, right? So I think what he's saying is like, how do we weigh those two things, we want to preserve affordability, but also there's no incentive for people to maintain the properties. And they can't fully benefit from market forces if they can't sell their property at full market value. So it's sort of like, how do we weigh those things? And what I think where the conversation is going is I think we, I hear people saying we have a policy interest. In allowing a little bit more of a free market sale, however, we want to put some restrictions on it. Such as, you know, capping whether or not you can join lots and things like that, so there's a little bit of like a middle ground there.
Well said.
What if for new developments it had to be in a mobile home park? That we weren't going to have any new. Individual and, you know, that. I guess the risk there is that the, I've heard stories of places where mobile home parks have been basically bought up and. You know, people get kicked out and then. I don't know.
That's, my question that I'm thinking about in this and it's. You said it very well, so like, that's, I think that summarizes a lot of my similar thoughts. There's this other issue. And I'm I'm just curious, has there been conversation about how to encourage, how to encourage mobile home parks? Because. If you limit, you know, most communities restrict mobile home parks out of out of existence as far as I'm aware. And, you know, if we're looking at ways to increase affordability, there could be opportunities to say. How can we promote mobile home parks now, one of the big detriments, I I I'd be surprised if a developer wanted to. Create a mobile home park if they knew they were permanently capped. As a mobile home park, you know, so that's an entirely separate issue, but, you know, just a. It's kind of a thought I'm having. I don't know if there's been much discussion.
I don't think we've had much discussion, right, and that's a really interesting idea.
What, I'll just throw this one out there too, cause it started, got me thinking about the the retention of the affordability. If folks are allowed to sell these individual lots, you know, size, unit size is. One of those kind of caps, if you will, to to cost and market value. Obviously, most of these mobile homes that are out there are fairly small in in size, five hundred, seven hundred square feet total. You know, what if there was an additional, yeah, you can go ahead and and build a stick built, but it can be no larger than X amount of square feet. And that would potentially help retain that affordability without adding an inclusionary housing fee, you know, on top of it, without it requiring that it be deed restricted.
And it would keep the the neighborhood looking similar to, you know, I mean, somebody wouldn't come in and try to build the very biggest thing they could on the tiny little lot. I like that idea.
It's the same height restrictions, right?
Currently, yes. Believe, I don't have the new code in front of me, but I think that it would be limited to that twenty eight feet at midpoint.
I mean, you could still do two story.
Right, it would be like a slot house.
It's a difficult, I'm work, I'm actually working on something for the housing trust. And for a single family, it's pretty easy in that like twenty foot by fifty foot. To kind of get, you know, couple of bedrooms and a bathroom and a kitchen and like a little mechanical room. But in that same space, we're trying, we're trying to get like a workforce. Type of scenario where you have two bedrooms, two baths, you know, like shared and then a shared center space. It's pretty difficult in that space, you know, so it's, cause it's, yeah, the the twenty feet. So you end up with some hallway that, you know, is like, kind of just takes up, yeah, so. I guess I'm just throwing it out there that there's some scenarios that I think we would, we wouldn't want to totally restrict, or maybe we would just be able to do that. In here if it was workforce.
Right, I think that's.
Housing, some flex, more flexible parameters. Yeah, what would that look like in? I don't know, like, yeah. Yeah, didn't get that far. No, no, I'm just trying to envision.
How many units are we talking about, do we know, I mean, I can think of a bunch.
There's quite a few.
Like fifty?
What's that?
How many units?
Lots are we talking, do you have any idea?
Citywide, you're, I mean, of those like individually owned R four, I think you've, you're probably seventy five, eighty.
I do think this is a really interesting line of discussion that we should.
I do too. Yeah, I do too.
Yeah, because, you know, I I think it's important that we do something because. As you said, some of those things are getting close to being unlivable. And. So what are we gonna do, we're gonna condemn them and then the people are homeless?
But if they were, yeah, if they were allowed to sell the lot to someone who wanted to put another manufactured home or a stick built home on the lot. Of a certain size that was agreeable and, you know, I I think that's a great idea. But I but I also want to go back to what Give said, replacement, not so much new, because the new ones should be like, you know, you were saying, R three. And if we're annexing, we can make that recommendation and state the reasons, and if somebody wants to do a mobile home park, then they come to us with that specifically.
I mean, I think we have to have eyes wide open that, you know, there are probably. Numerous examples of lots that people own and they they own the mobile home that's on that lot, or maybe they're leasing the space to somebody else. This, you know, that space could be sold out from underneath these individuals. And that that is.
That's true.
It's a realistic possibility.
So we can't write the code doesn't apply to landlords, right?
Fortunately not. Yeah, and and to best of my knowledge, the state regulations around allowing. The occupants of an RV park to potentially purchase that park only applied RV parks, not to these individual, you know, lots. So. I I, my sense is that's the minority, the minority of those lots, that they're they're leased out, I think vast majority of them actually own and live. In those, but there may be some situations.
You might say.
So I'm hearing.
I don't know how many.
Oh, you don't know how many?
I just know a lot of people that live in them.
Yeah, well, we were having a sidebar here about, you know, maybe Salty has some information about people she knows and how many of them might be leased out.
Quite a few that I know, but I could probably think of ten off the top of my head.
Yeah, that that number, I wouldn't be surprised if citywide, it's a little bit higher than that.
Yeah, cause I'm thinking of like ten, like right there on the Maple Elm area alone. I don't know very many people in some of the other places, so.
Are you talking about folks that are renting or folks that own, that own the units and are renting the lot?
I'm talking about, I know about ten tenants in that Scott Street Maple area who are renting.
People who are renting from an owner.
Yeah.
Lots to think about.
There are.
Unintended consequences, like, you know, you'd hate for that to happen, but at the same time. The unintended consequence of not being able to sell the property and build something on it.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of these mobile homes were never meant to have a shelf life longer than twenty five, thirty years and they're going on fifty or more.
And they can't be moved after a certain age, yeah. Right?
Decomposing underneath.
Yeah, quite a few from out of town.
Paradise isn't in our, right, we don't have paradise.
Well, I guess what I'm hearing from folks is there's, there's definitely interest. In trying to allow for greater flexibility within these individually owned lots. While still trying to maintain some level of affordability on those lots. Certainly trying to incentivize and protect existing RV parks for their naturally occurring affordability. Certainly more discussion needed, but this maybe gives us a little bit of a framework for the land use code and and. Some options within it that we can pose to the public and see how they feel. Before bringing it back. Anybody else have any other thoughts before we? Move on, cause that's the last thing that we have on our list to talk about today. So Caroline, just get a quick little analysis of an area near Scott Street and Maple Drive on there along the river and. Within that middle section of about twenty homes, about seven of them show ownership from out of town, so you can assume that. They're either rented out or even potentially service second homes.
Or abandoned.
Potentially.
I mean, I know a lot of renters in that that specific area, but I don't know anyone in the Palmer Vine Walnut area at all, but. Yeah, Scott Street, there's a lot of, a lot of renters in that area.
Some are taking much better care of than than others, that particular development right there, I think, is in fairly good shape. Might be reflective of when it was actually initially put in. Alright, cool, thank you, appreciate the feedback.
Thank you for bringing that to us, that was a good discussion.
That was great.
It's an interesting one.
Where does the land use code stand at the moment?
Yeah, so it's a, it's on me at the moment to send. The rest of the feedback from the land use code advisory committee and staff. To Matt, we're about halfway through. Got the comments from all the the very first meeting we had in December, most of the comments from our second meeting and then still have to provide him with the the rest of them. And we hope to have something back here in the next, I'd say, three weeks from him, that we will be able to then. Put out to the general public and and schedule. from him, that we will be able to then put out to the general public and, and schedule an open house. I'm kind of holding off on, on the date, just because things just keep getting pushed back with our staffing issues and everything else right now. So, but we're getting closer.
Good.
For sure. So, it's just a lot. I mean-
Yeah.
Between the staff comments and all the comments we got from the Advisory Committee, all, all of which are very valid and, and really good, it sometimes takes, you know, it's one of those, it's like the string unraveling a bunch of other sections, you know, you change one thing, you kind of have to change it everywhere else, and that's where the time comes in, so.
Well, and it's worth taking the time to get it right.
Yep, yep, because we're not gonna reread it in full 10 times. It's a really hard first. I mean, except for Greg.
Well, we'll rely on Greg and Giv as a brain trust.
I would assume by the, the next meeting that we have on the 24th, that, um, we'll either have something back, or it's all gonna be in Clarion's court at that point.
Oh, good.
Are we gonna have anything on the 24th besides?
Yeah, Chris was saying yes.
Yeah, we're gonna, yep, yeah, we'll have a, um, limited impact review.
And will we have a work session in March?
Not, not, nothing that we have right now scheduled, so I would say at this point that March meeting is probably canceled. We'll confirm that, but I think that's the way it's looking right now.
Bill, there was, there was a pretty in-depth conversation about the inclusionary housing at council-
Yeah.
Last week.
Yeah.
Um, it's pretty interesting if anybody's interested and goes back and watches it. Is, is that conversation being continued at all?
It, it is. Um, so, to summarize what happened, there was a request from the developer of Holman Court, um, over off of Holman Ave, who, if you all recall, they, um, agreed through their plan development approval to deed-restrict two of, out of 14 units. When they did that initially, it was, the requirement was only one out of eight. Um, so they technically were exceeding the inclusionary housing requirement with those two units because of only 14 units. Um, in the interim, they had come back, uh, after we had changed the inclusionary housing code to allow for a greater AMI spread than just 80%, and they got the, um, ability to sell one at 120 and the other at 140, plus pay some additional fees in lieu. They came back, they were able to sell one of those units, one at 120% AMI. Um, they did struggle recently, over the last year or so, to sell the one at 140% AMI for a variety of factors, um, not the least of which is the fact that our deed restrictions require that the units stay as affordable even through foreclosure. Um, right now, with the interest rates as they are, the USDA loans are the most affordable and, uh, easily accessible loans for people interested in buying deed restrictions, but the USDA would not agree to, um, in, keeping it affordable even if it went into foreclosure. USDA, just like a lot of other private lenders, want to be able to make a buck, basically, put it on the open market if it is, um, goes into foreclosure. So, they've had a couple of people have to walk away or not, not get approved for their loan because of that particular restriction. Um, that language is going to be discussed at a work set, at the next council work session, um, for one, specifically about that requirement. Um, you know, under the premise that you want to have people in the houses, it doesn't do anybody any good for it to sit empty. Um, in the end, the, 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 so the developer had asked to have one of those units, the one that's unsold, uh, the requirement, you know, relief from that requirement to actually deed-restrict it and, and instead be able to pay a fee in lieu. That fee in lieu would have been pretty hefty, actually, because you, you look at it over the entire development, not just that one unit. Um, our calculation had it up around $165,000. Um, and in the end, it sounded like the, the developer was willing to do that. Um, however, council ended up deciding not to relieve him from that unit, from that deed-restricted unit, um, under the philosoph, you know, philosophy that we need those deed-restricted units. Um, he had agreed to it initially, he had agreed to it subsequently in the, in the, in the amendment, and they ended up voting, um, to deny that request. So, he's going back now, working with the housing authority to, to see if they can, they can sell it. Um, he did have some offers on it. He had a contract, I think he was still under contract, but it was a conditional contract. The person has some other property in another location that they need to sell before they can actually buy it. So, hopefully, they're able to actually sell that and everything will be done and they can walk away. But, um, the parts that are gonna be discussed, I think, first and foremost, are the, the loans and that particular requirement around foreclosures. Um, there may be some additional discussion around, uh, the, the percentage of, um, increase over, year over year, that somebody can recoup in a future sale. Right now, it's capped at 2%, plus any additional, uh, improvements that somebody puts into that house. Um, there may be other, other pieces that come up in that conversation. But at this moment, seems like council's, you know, pretty much dead-set about retaining those built units and not foregoing it in, for fee in lieu. But we want to tie, tighten up some of that language around marketing and advertisement and, and the requirements and everything else, while it's still making it easier for folks to actually acquire those units.
Can I, I just want to make a comment. I was really disappointed in that decision by council, and I'll say that in a public meeting on YouTube, um, because I think, again, it's, it's the institutional knowledge that we have that it can sometime, sometimes inform exceptions. And I remember this particular, uh, situation vividly, and, and I remember ask, I was the one who asked him if he would be willing to do two instead of the fee in lieu. And he was so cooperative and so willing and so able, and it really, it, it's really, I think it's really unfortunate that council may not have had all of that information at the time that they made that decision, to realize how cooperative and willing and, you know, I mean, this is, this is an exceptional situation. You know, yes, we want the built units, but we also want to, to help people who are really cooperative like that to solve a problem that's hurting them financially in this way. I mean, he's been trying to sell that house for, what, two years now, I think. So, I, I just, you know, it really, it was unfortunate, an unfortunate decision. And I think it was made without, with the best intentions, but without all of the, the information that might have been available if they'd asked.
I agree.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that, I mean, the last time I checked, you probably would know, but, I mean, foreclosures on deed-restricted homes is less than 1%.
It's, it's-
Just making sure.
No, it, it's, it's a rare, it's a rarity, for sure.
The lenders can, can refuse on that basis, and that's the issue.
Yeah, well, we're, we had a conversation with the housing authority today, and we've asked them to, um, check with some other housing authorities and other deed restrictions to find out what kind of language they have in there. Um, there's certainly a few that have language similar to ours, um, but at the very least, if we could get language in that allows the potential of the housing authority or the city to purchase that deed-restricted unit, so that we can help keep it deed-restricted, that would be ideal.
That would be ideal.
Yeah, so hopefully, we get a little bit more of a report back on that. They'll be a part of that conversation at the next work session.
Good.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question, Kenny? It's-
Yeah, yeah, no, I was just, it, it was a, I think it's a really relevant con, you know, specific issue to figure out. It's nuanced, but-
Yeah.
Um, it's important.
It's one of those unintended consequences that we were just talking about, you know, and, and I think we have to, we have to have, as a city, as a commission, as a council, we have to have the willingness to really look at the exceptions that are really valid exceptions before we just say a val, you know, a blanket, we want to keep the house deed-restricted. You know, I mean, I'm not saying that everybody that might apply for that would be granted, but there are some specific individuals who I think should be heard that way.
Yeah, it was a, it was a difficult-
Yeah.
-conversation, for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, hopefully, uh, council has some good thoughts around it at the next meeting.
Feel free to share my opinion.
Mine, too.
If you're watching.
If they aren't watching, they never do.
They're not watching. They're not allowed to.
Uh, do we need a motion adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Sec, motion on the second. All in favor?
Aye, 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 aye. All right, Salty.